Wake up Wake County and the Wake County League of Women Voters present. The 2013 Wake County School Board District Nine Candidates Forum. Moderating the forum is Marion Lewin of the Wake County League of Women Voters.
This is a forum. A forum is designed to give all the candidates an opportunity to present themselves and speak on the issues. Members of the Wake County Board of Education serve a four-year term. All members represent a district in the county. Voters must be residents of that district in order to vote for a candidate in that district. The districts serve staggered terms. This year, districts one, two, seven, and nine are open for election. All candidates are nonpartisan, meaning they are not running as representatives of their political party. All right, Bill. Hopefully, that's on. Is it on?
It is on.
Okay, good.
And I'm going to stand up at least for this, if I may. Hi, I'm Bill Fletcher. First of all, let me thank the organizers of this event for putting forth the effort and the publicity to get people out and to help our voters become more informed and hopefully have something more than 9 percent voter turnout come October 8th. So, thank you very much for that effort. In terms of our schools, we've got a crisis on our hands. Our schools have lost their academic edge. 25 percent of our third graders can't read at grade level. Our graduation rate has slipped below the North Carolina average, and in grades three through eight, less than 80 percent of our children are reading and doing math at grade level. And just last month, an audit of our services to academically gifted children basically gave Wake County a D minus. So, our schools are slipping toward mediocrity, and we need to do some things differently. I'm Bill Fletcher. I want to lead our schools back to excellence, the excellence that our community deserves and demands. There are four things that I'm sure we'll flesh out as the night goes on. One, we must provide greater academic rigor. Two, every student must learn to read. Three, students deserve to have stable school assignments and reasonable proximity to their home, and a plan that supports both fiscal, I mean, facility and personnel, proper utilization. And last, every family deserves to have a high-performing school in close proximity to their home, whether they live in Cary or somewhere else in the county. The bottom line is that every student needs to be prepared for success, and I hope I will have your support in making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cagia.
I am honored to be here, and I'm thrilled to see this many people interested in education of our children, and I appreciate you listening to us tonight. I was married to a retired Commander Cagia about 25 years ago, and we came down here on a six-month assignment to North Carolina, fell in love with it, and stayed. We have three daughters. Two are currently in Wake County Public School System at band practice right now, and the other is a graduate of Wake County Public School System at NC State. I started in the PTA in the classroom when my child was in kindergarten, and after 9/11, I became very concerned with preparedness, safety, and health of our children in the school system. And I immediately started advocating to the state levels to make sure that our schools were prepared. From then, I moved into, about 2005, I moved into worrying about curriculum, what our children were learning in the schools, why and how well they were learning it. I really think we need to get back to that academic focus into our school system. We need to make sure every child is showing academic growth each year. I also would like to make sure we find out where our money is being spent, and that is being spent on programs that are effective, and we need to have data-driven policies that lead the school system. I'd like to see the headlines for our newspapers saying, "Every child has great growth in Wake County." So, and I also work well with other people, and I have some very nice endorsements, I think you can see on my website, and I look forward to working collaboratively with everyone so we can move the school system forward, and I look forward to this evening. Thank you.
Also, I just wanted to say that I think that on the program, the contact for Mr. Fletcher was incorrect. He has a different and preferred contact than the one that's there. Mr. Fletcher, if you'd like to, just go ahead and say what it is.
Yeah, the website is billfletcherforschoolboard.com, and the email is billfletcherforschoolboard@gmail.com. The address that's here is the school board address. I don't want to do campaign business there.
And also, if you go to our website, lvwwake.org, and you click on the left on voter information, all that we have on the websites and the email addresses for all the candidates in Raleigh and for the school board, too. Okay, all right. So, we'll ask the first question, and it'll go to Nancy. Do you mind if I call first name, or is that all right? Okay. Don't want to be too informal here. "The school bond has become controversial and has become a partisan issue. If it doesn't pass, how will you recommend the Wake County school system handle the need for additional seats in the classroom?"
I would hope that the bond passes. I support the bond.
I said, "I hope the bond passes. I do support the bond. Our children and our teachers need adequate, safe space to learn, and we also need the technology and we need the safety factors added." So, I do hope that we support the bond. If we don't, I, we think we need to look at maybe fulfilling the capacity that we have at available space, potentially increasing some tracks and making sure that they're filled to their, most possibly, we can fit into each school. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
It's a great question, and it, the answer is, we need to pass the bond. That is the best way to meet the needs of the county. I firmly believe that the student enrollment projections that have been used to build the program are extremely conservative. They are way below what we're actually going to experience in growth. This is the best place in America to live, work, and to raise a family. People are coming here. They're going to keep coming here. The current rate is about 60 people a day move into Wake County, and we're going to have more children than we know what to do with. The right thing for us to do as a community is to pass this bond referendum. And I will, when I go to a school, I ask people, "How many of you were here when this school was built?" And very few people raise their hand, because folks like you were willing to vote to support the capital program for our community schools. So, that's what we need to do, full steam ahead, focused on getting this bond issue passed.
All right. Question number two, we'll start with Mr. Fletcher. Bill, what is one specific need in District Nine, because you're going to represent District Nine, that you would advocate for if elected?
As a school board member elected in District Nine, I have responsibility to serve the entire county, which is part of the mindset of a good school board member. That being said, in terms of this district, I believe what most of the folks here are looking for is greater academic rigor and opportunity for their students to excel. Not being satisfied with getting a three on an end-of-grade or end-of-course test, but helping children identify their potential, providing them with the resources they need to explore and to grow and to reach their potential here in our schools and the community.
I agree that a board member from District Nine serves the entire Wake County Public School System, and what is good for Cary, I believe is good for the entire school system. Specifically in Cary, I think we need to have more opportunities, educational opportunities for these children to grow to their potential by engaging them in the classroom and also outside of the classroom. We need to somehow balance the pull on magnet schools, but also allowing more electives or more educational classes and curriculum to be offered in the everyday school here in Cary. There's got to be a balance there. I understand magnet programs, but I think here in Cary, we have one magnet school, and I think we need to examine that and see what else we can do to get the children the rigor that they need. Thank you.
Okay. Next question, we'll start with Nancy. "The school suspension rate in Wake County is inordinately high, with many of these suspensions given for disrespect of staff or inappropriate language. What is your position on student discipline, and how will you suggest that students, teachers, and staff are equally supported?"
I'm on the raising, achieving, closing gap, where we did look at the student suspension rate, and I believe that it was moved away from the zero tolerance, where a child would not get in trouble for cursing or doing something that might not be as serious as threatening a teacher. I think we need, again, to balance, we can't expect the teacher to be the policeman in the classroom. So, we have to have proper procedures to help those teachers and the administration from not having to do that. On the other hand, we also need to, once a child does get in trouble, we need to make it equitable for each child to be able to do the mitigating consequences, where they can either take a course, or they can find other ways and alternatives to stay in school and stay educated. Thank you.
Number one, has to be safety for the students, the teachers, and the administration. That's a given. Number two, there are some interesting things happening in the schools already that you may not know about. One program is called responsiveness to instruction, RTI for short, and this program is a, it takes place in the classroom, where when a student is disruptive, instead of saying, "Go to the principal's office," the teacher is asked to go into a reflective mode and say, "What is it about my instruction that is not meeting the needs of this child?" It's a very different concept, because most children, particularly as they get older, who misbehave, are bored in class. They're acting out to get some attention for some need that's not being met somewhere in their life. All right? And this responsiveness to instruction is an intervention strategy that starts with academics. Now, if they do have to be removed from the classroom, then there are other things we need to do to make sure their instruction continues.
Okay, thank you. Now, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Fletcher. "If you would be willing, oh, I say, would you be willing to advocate for increased funding from the Wake County Board of Commissioners? If yes, tell us precisely what you think the money should be spent on, and if no, tell us why not."
Precisely, I would be willing to advocate, and I think it's necessary for us to have a very clear strategic plan of how the money will help move us toward improved academic outcomes and better working conditions for our teachers. If we do the math, a $100 a month increase, local supplement to our teachers, is a penny tax increase at the county. That's a $10 million expense. Okay? $100 a month for all of our teachers, and round numbers is a $10 million expense. That's somewhere close to a penny of our local tax rate. I'm willing to go to the county commission and do that, but to get that approved by the county commission, we have to have a strategic plan in place. We have to build community around those objectives and go, not just with school board members or staff, but we need to go with the community to the county commission and say, "This is what we expect of our schools, what we need to do for our teachers. Put it in the budget."
Nancy.
Our funding comes from, for Wake County School Systems operations. We get 60 percent from the state, 25 percent county appropriations, 9 percent federal, and 6 percent from other sources. I think we need to, again, come up with our strategic goals and where we would like to be, and we need SMART goals. We need numbers, and we need to be accountable. We need to know when we reach the goals and what and what is not working by looking at the data. Then, we can find out what areas that need to be funded more, and then we go to that appropriate source. So, for teachers, it would go to the state. If we needed to do some local programs, we could go to the commissioners. And again, I believe in the collaboration of going together to work with the commissioners if we need to go to the state, idea with teachers, or more guidance counselors, or more safety officers, and we need to work together to get more funding for our schools.
Okay. Next question starts with Nancy. The state legislature has passed a number of laws in this last year, and the one that I'm focusing on right now is the concealed carry or concealed weapon law. So, if a parent, teacher, or staff member chooses to carry a concealed weapon, notice I didn't say student, on a Wake County public school campus, do you think they should have to notify the school principal of this? What role should the principal play in this security policy?
I'm on, was asked to serve on the Creating Safe Schools Task Force that was recently this spring, and one of the things we realized is that the principals are being put in a position where they don't necessarily, A, know the risks and the dangers around their surrounding area, and B, shouldn't really necessarily be put in that position. So, I don't know if I would ask the principals to be the policemen at the door checking each person for a weapon. I think that's something we need to look at a little further, and I don't, but I definitely would not put the principals in that position.
The statute is full of problems. Whatever you think about guns, the statute's full of problems. Only a law enforcement agency can get a list of people who have concealed carry permits. That means the only person on the campus that legitimately can have that information is the school resource officer, not the principal. All right? There are a lot of things, the policy things in this area are very, very difficult. We're trying to work through those now on the board. The law becomes effective October 1st, so there's a lot of scrambling to see what is the right thing for us to do to make sure our children are protected, that we've got the right structure in place so that our parents feel comfortable, and that we, to the best that we can, maintain a safe and secure environment for our students.
Okay. Next question starts with Bill. I personally was really surprised to hear that the graduation rate in Wake County schools had fallen below the average for the entire state of North Carolina. In fact, the graduation rate actually declined in several of our high schools. This is appalling, given the resources available to the school system. What are you going to do about that?
Well, it starts young. The graduation rate is the focus right now, as opposed to the dropout rate. The graduation rate is those kids who stayed in for 13 years. The dropout rate's another group of kids who didn't graduate. So, we come back to academic rigor. We come back to, do the students have the fundamentals early on in terms of reading? If they're not able to read well, they will not be successful academically. And when they get to be 16 or 17, they're going to just go through the paces if they stay in school to satisfy their parents, or they're going to disappear and go into the workforce as a poorly trained people. So, the focus has to be on the relevance of the curriculum that we're teaching and help young people make the connection between what we're asking them to learn and how we're asking them to learn to think with what the career opportunities are for them when they get out of school. It's a relevance, rigor, and relationships, the new three Rs of education.
I believe that we need to act early, and we need to find a reason for the children to want to learn in the classroom. The old "with them, what's in it for me?" We need to make some of the things that we're teaching them, if we're learning, some angles, why are they learning how to do that for stair building? So, I think we need to come up with some options for them and engage them. Some of them might be skills. We want to have marketable and productive citizens that come out of the graduation of our school system. We also have different reasons why children drop out. Some of them could be very personal. They may need to stay home and work, but they don't have a family situation that can support them, so we need to find other ways. There's those learn and earn situations, maybe. The other thing is possibly health. So, I think there's a whole area of things that we need to look at, but that should be one of our, that's our product, is our graduates, so we need to start looking at that.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask one more question, then I'm going to toss it to the audience, because it looks like we have a large group of very engaged people, so I'm sure you have questions that you want to ask. So, I'm going to ask one more question, and you can be thinking of your questions, and then we'll start with you after this one. Okay. And I think Nancy, you'll go first for this one, right? You just, yeah. "The voters in Wake County would like to know about your innovative vision for education in our schools. In addition, what is your integrated plan for implementing that vision?"
I believe our children are walking around now in a technology that is way far than all of us can use in this room. We have kids in strollers using iPads and iPhones, some of them at least, but they still get it better than we do. That's how they're learning, and we need to stay ahead of that. We have North Carolina Virtual Public Schools, where a child can be in eighth grade, learning 10th grade math, but may be at a sixth grade leading level. We need to start figuring out how we're going to do classroom without walls. We need to set policies that embrace this technology and use it for acceleration and for remediation. So, I believe that we need, as a board, policy to get ahead of this and to lead the way.
In 60 seconds.
There can be follow-ups. You know, people can ask you follow-up questions.
I think the, we've got a major sea change going on in our schools right now, and the state having adopted a new curriculum that's asking students to learn and to demonstrate what they learn in a different way. It's asking teachers to teach what they teach and how they teach it in a different way. And that, I believe, is the innovative force that will help our students be prepared for the careers of the future, that they're not just learning things and repeating the rodent formation back. It's not just road instruction. They're learning how to think, they're learning how to problem solve, they're learning how to work in teams, and to communicate their strategy and their process for solving problems. And three teams may have three different processes for solving a problem and coming up with the right answer. And in that, they are learning the skills they need that the governor is recruiting, that the chamber is recruiting to our area, high-tech, medical, et cetera. So, I think it's in the schools now. We need to support it and implement it well.
Okay, thank you. All right. Please proceed to the microphone for your questions. Don't be shy. Don't be shy. And it would be great if you stated your name, and I'm assuming that you live in Wake County.
All right. My name is Mabel Watson. My questions to the candidates are, what is one of the first things that you would do or change once you become elected?
Bill, I think you've got, yeah.
This world revolves around relationships, and that, to me, is the important thing that we have to do as a school board and as a school board member, is to build relationships, positive relationships, respectful relationships with the other elected people in our community, with the senior administrators in our schools, with the superintendent. Having been appointed in March, we're moving down that road now, and being elected in October, we're continuing to do that. That is the fundamental necessity for moving our school system forward, building community support, changing the funding formulas locally, those kinds of things. It's relationship-driven, so it's not flashy, it's not a hand grenade thrown in the kitchen to see what comes out. It is hard work, building relationships with other people who are community leaders, and building community around having an excellent school system.
When I've been out campaigning, I've been talking to people, and I've been quite pleased that I've been, already been able to take the politics out of the discussion, because I think people are fed up in hearing party lines. I've got the GOP endorsement, and I also have the Democratic support from the local town mayor and local officials here in Cary. Right away, that lets people breathe and say, "Okay, now we can focus on talking about student achievement." That was the first thing I would like to do. And how I would do that is by supporting the teachers in the classroom and getting better principals and giving them better policies so that they know that they are appreciated, and we put the respect back into the teaching profession and concentrate on the student-teacher relationship.
All right. Yes?
Good evening. I'm Tammy Moore. I'm a resident here in District Nine, four children, Wake County Public School products. Three are in college, one currently enrolled, currently enrolled in a middle school here in Cary, but my three that are in college are doing well from Wake County, and they're representing across the country. So, I know we spend a lot of time talking about what's wrong. My question is, what do you think is working well in Wake County that you, as a board member, would like to see continued?
Thank you. When I first started advocating the school system for more safety, one of the things that Dr. Elsie Leake first said to me is exactly what you're saying. We have to remember what we're doing right. And I think that we do have, and I'm, it may be painful, but I do like the way we are trying to move toward implementing Common Core curriculum. Hopefully, we'll get better and better at it each time. I think it is a worthwhile product. I think it's, not product, but it's a new method, and I think our children are actually thinking at the higher-level thinking skills. So, I think that is something that we're doing right, and I'm actually liking seeing what my children are coming home with and how their minds are expanding. Thank you.
What's working well? Our teachers. Our teachers are dedicated, committed. If it was a compensation, they would have left a long time ago. All right? And some of them do. Inlows lost four science teachers this summer because they got a 50 percent pay bump to go work in the park somewhere. All right? When we recruit teachers and tell them, "We can guarantee you're going to have $36,000 as your salary for the next five years, come to Wake County," that's not much of an incentive. So, we've got to celebrate our teachers, we've got to support our teachers. I think this responsiveness to instruction is a strategy. The support in the schools for helping them learn how to teach Common Core and deal with what is such a dramatically different way of teaching and learning, that's important. And of course, all those budgets have been cut in the last five years for various reasons. So, I think celebrating our teachers, recognizing them in every way that we can, because they do a great job for us every day.
Yep. My name's Tina Jordan. Could you please describe what community service activities you've been involved in and how that would help you as a school board member?
Thank you. I was involved in the Board of Education for 12 years. I left in 2005. Since then, I've got involved with, well, before that, I was involved in the Rotary Club, and I put my focus in the Rotary Club into literacy and leadership. I'm a director in my Rotary Club, and we have a great team of folks who work together. And we have focused on the issue of childhood literacy, primarily children in grades K through 2. We collect books, buy books, make them available to the school in a special program that we call Read a Book, Get a Book. And the child gets the book, reads the book, brings it back, reads it to the teacher. That's the child's book. The child gets to take it home and put it in his personal library. And we're seeing great success in this. We now have the program in nine schools in Wake County, completely funded by Rotary Clubs and other donations. So, that's what I've been doing. I have, I left the school system from a political standpoint, but I've been working with kids to help them learn to read.
For the last 14 years, I have been involved where I have a resume that, the first page alone is just what I've done and have been assigned to the Wake County School System alone, from working with the AIG Advisory Committee, is trying to make sure that every child, Level 4 and AIG, meets academic growth, to working on the Emergency Manager Task Force, to working on the School Health Advisory Committee, where I strongly recommended that we get tobacco-free schools. That was years ago, but that's how long I've been engaged. I was also working very hard to get a bullying policy. If our children don't feel safe and to be able to raise their hand and talk out, I think we needed to work on that, and we did. We got that put back in 2004. I've also worked in the areas in the state level. I've worked with the NCAGT, the National Association for, excuse me, the North Carolina Association for Gifted and Talented, again, working alongside educational professionals to ensure best practices. I was assigned to the Educational Governor's School Task Force to make sure that funding, that was a model program for 50 other states. I also did kids voting to make sure that our children learn their civic duty in the classroom. I've also worked in our town with Safety and Task Force. I was on the Emergency Citizens Assisting Police Task Force. Again, this is all about making sure our children feel safe and happy and grow to be protective students. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Morris. I'm a Cary resident and the mother of two sons at Dillard Drive Middle School. I want to know, what do you think are the important issues in special education? One, for students who are mainstream but receive special education services, and two, for students who are in self-contained classrooms in Wake County.
I want to know what we think about education for, well, you guys think are the issues that need to be addressed in special education.
Well, you guys think are the issues that need to be addressed in special education in Wake County?
You can repeat the question. Sorry.
What do you think are the important issues in special education in Wake County? One, for students who are mainstream and receive special education services. And two, for students who are in self-contained classrooms.
I think, again, they need to make sure that these children's needs and strengths and weaknesses are being addressed. It's kind of why I came up with that flower approach, that each petal could be a different strength and weakness. And just because they have a special need in one area does not mean they necessarily can excel in another area, of being doubly exceptional. So I think we need to, again, in the mainstream versus self-contained, I think wherever they are, we need to meet their needs and help them to grow to the best they can be with their potentials.
Difficult question, 60 seconds again. The, in 2003, the school district reached the end of a goal that we had called Goal 2003. And we looked at every child, saying, we want every child to be able to read and do math at grade level. The goal was 95%. We reached 91.3%, including special education kids. Now, we were in the 60s in terms of the percent of special education children who were performing at or above grade level. Today, that number is dramatically lower than that. That tells me that there's been a lack of focus and a lack of high expectations of what children who have special needs can accomplish. And we've accepted something less than what would be the students' best. We need to look at the leadership and make sure that that's not an attitude that, we cannot allow that attitude to be pervasive. We have to snuff it out and we need to look at each child and make sure they are stretched to their potential of what they're capable of, whether it's in self-contained or whether it's in the classroom. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kusima Wykon. I'm a student in the Wake County Public School System and I'm also a member of NCHEAT. I'm here to ask you about the fact that students rarely have a voice at school board meetings and in discussions of the issues and policies that will most directly impact them. I believe both Ms. Nancy and Mr. Bill have referred to our appallingly low graduation rate, which has equally appalling disparities based on race and disability status. And that low graduation rate can be conversely expressed as a rate at which students are pushed out of school by ineffective and punitive discipline policies. Would you be open to meeting with a representative body of students on a regular basis to discuss their opinions and input on the policies that will be affecting them?
I'm happy to meet with anyone at almost any time. We just need to find it to be agreeable. The challenge with meeting with what you've asked, the challenge with meeting with a group of students that's identified by someone with an agenda, is that that is not a broad-based understanding of what students across the county are interested in. In the past, superintendents have had student advisory councils. We've had different ways that involve students in participating. I'm very open to figure out how we might be able to do that and to do it in a way that is inclusive, not exclusive, but inclusive. And to, we get better by hearing things we don't want to hear. And many times, folks might choose to avoid a meeting like that because they don't want to hear what they're going to hear. But I think it's important for us to hear that, whether it's students or parents, for us to be open and listen to those voices so that we can be better, more effective policymakers. So yes.
Thank you for being so engaged. Right now, there is a law that's called a School Improvement Team, where three parents are allowed to be on the School Improvement Team, where they look at the data from each school and identify with the administration what they would like to see happen. See if you can't get on that School Improvement Team at your local school. And that might be a way for you to get your voice heard in a local level first. That might be the first step. Also, I've been on the many committees, like the Grading School Task Force, where we did have student members, where they are looking for student input. So I would say try to, I think maybe as a board member, I would make sure that we are constantly looking out for that and trying to find people that would like to have their voices heard in that area. And even with the Wake Up and Read, my Girl Scout is on the Wake Up and Read, because it's important to her for literacy. So I think each child, if you have such an agenda, there is a way to have your voice heard within the school system. And I, again, I've already seen ways that it works.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Tavon Bridges and I'm in the Wake County system and I'm also with NCHEAT. My question tonight was about school suspension, where in 2012, the year after the Zero Tolerance Policy was abolished, where the leveling program was brought into, where non-compliance and disrespect were a level-two offense and still suspendable. I would like to ask any tactics or action that you could put in place in schools where we could reduce the number, which was 14,000 students that were suspended?
Again, working on the Raising, Achieving, Closing Gaps Task Force, I know we were looking at that and I think Marvin came up with a policy where there could be other procedures that could help all children. The levels, I think, is also being currently looked at by the board. And when I'm on that, I think that's a very important issue because students need to be in school to learn, but we also need to worry about balancing that with the safety of all of the children. So we need to look at why they're being suspended and if it's, again, those different levels and see what we can do to help it. And we also have positive behavior support that we use in the elementary schools. And again, at an early age, if we can encourage good behavior, then we won't have a problem with it when they get older.
Students need to be in the classroom to learn. And if they're not in the classroom for safety reasons, then we need to have a supplemental instructional strategy that helps them make better choices so they can be in the classroom but not lose their instruction while they're out in in-school suspension. There is a problem with our data at the school district. If a student is sent to the office for lack of compliance or being disruptive or cursing at a teacher, and that escalates into another offense, it shows up as that minor offense in the suspension data. You also indicated that 14,000 students have been suspended. I'm not sure that's correct. It could be that there were 14,000 incidents in which a student was suspended. And it's a dramatically lower number of actual students. And frankly, I don't know which is which at the moment, but I do know that we're working to find that out. I think the RTI program's going to help and better in-school support for education and choice-making is going to be there.
Hello, my name's Amina and I'm a resident of Cary, North Carolina. And my question was, students with disabilities and students of color are suspended disproportionately at high rates. What policies do you think contribute to this issue?
I'm not sure a policy does. There's no policy that says children of color should be suspended more often. So it winds up being the people who implement the policy and the people who assess the needs of the children. And that's where we need to look. We need to look at the classroom teachers, the principals, the folks who are providing the intervention before we get to suspension, to say, what's happening? What are we seeing? How can we change the environment so this student will be productively engaged in school and it doesn't wind up being a suspension issue? That's how we're going to deal with it. If a child misbehaves, regardless of the color, I mean, if there's a safety issue, regardless of the color or the disability, we've got at least 25 other kids in that classroom that deserve a positive instructional environment. So let's be real with ourselves, that the color of one's skin does not cause the behavioral issue. But it might affect an administrator's approach to the problem. And we need to make sure we deal with that in an effective way.
One of the things that I'm still always learning and I'm always asking questions. And one of the questions that I had recently had on, it was about a just community and about tolerance and respect. And I think that's something that we need to develop, again, at an early age in our school system. And not only the safety and the health, but along with that bullying policy, to make sure that children don't feel like they have a label that's not making them want to be in school, that they feel that they're not welcomed. And I think if we get that at an early age and make it a nurturing environment for children, maybe there won't be problems later on again. And I don't really, I agree, there shouldn't be a policy that causes that to happen. So I would like to make sure that at an early age and all along, that we feel like our children feel engaged and wanted and loved in school.
Hello, my name is Elena. I'm a student at Cary High School and I'm with NCHEAT.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Yes. My question is that dress code restrictions in schools are disproportionately targeted towards female-bodied people, comparing their bodies to objects that need to be covered so that male students aren't distracted during school hours. Students are punished for not conforming to these rules, including through suspension. Do you feel that these restrictions are fair and that they are necessary?
As a mother of three daughters, I expect my children to be in an environment that's not distracting the other students, yes, sorry. I think to the point where I don't want a uniform, but I think there has to be some respect to other people and they need to be dressed appropriately.
Very interesting question. And it's a difficult one to deal with. The reality is that when you dress in a particular way, your behavior follows you. If you're going to work, you're going to dress in business casual, you're going to dress in a suit, and your behavior will follow what you wear. If you're going to be something other than a great student, you might choose to wear clothes that would encourage you to have that approach at school. So I think the dress code, it's a tough one to administer, but it needs to be focused on, you come to school to learn, don't do things that are going to distract yourself or other children from learning. Be respectful of your neighbors. That dress code is an important part of maintaining proper decorum in our schools, however difficult it may be to administer.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Barnes. I'm a student with Wake County Public School System and I'm here with NCHEAT. Alternative learning centers do not include a variety of different aspects that other public schools provide for students, such as extracurriculars, group work, hands-on learning, or elective courses. Do you think that alternative learning centers are an appropriate response to suspensions? And if so, do you think that any changes should be made to the system currently in place?
I have learned that some of our alternative, let's define what we're talking about. This is a place within the school building. Are we talking about within the school building or are you talking about an alternative school?
Alternative schools.
An alternative school, okay? Alternative schools are set up to help children learn to make different decisions, to make better decisions, to choose to excel academically as opposed to whatever they were doing before they got invited to go to the alternative school. All right? And in a very different environments, very different construct, very different expectations from your regular school. If you want to play sports, do what you're supposed to do in the regular school. All right? That's the bottom line. The alternative schools are there for a different purpose. They're to help young people make better decisions, to help keep them on course to graduation, and to hopefully, when they make those better decisions, either to reintroduce them into the school where they came from or to help them into the career or higher education that they have decided to pursue.
I think it comes down to a funding. Not every school can have a band, a sports team, and all the other extracurricular activities. That costs money and that, so I think you have to balance the funding. And I agree that these are alternative learning things. So maybe we need to look at alternative ways to engage the child. Maybe we can do something with some career technical training. Maybe we can give them some other skills. Maybe just because a person becomes a dental assistant doesn't mean they can't go on to become a dentist someday. So I think maybe, all these other things you mentioned, maybe extras, but I think what they need to focus on there is getting back into academics and growing and learning to become a marketable, productive citizen, at best we can, to help them.
Hi, my name is Hector Gutierrez and I live at Cary High School. African-American students comprised of 60% of out-of-school suspensions last year. Well, yes. They comprised of 60% of out-of-school suspensions last year while only comprising of 25% of the student body, while economically disadvantaged students were 63% of out-of-school suspensions but only made up 33% of the student body. Do you believe that suspensions are geared toward minority or underprivileged students? I know that you kind of hinted at already that it's not necessarily policies that are specifically targeting these students, but do you have any way that you want to maybe help those students that probably needed the most to help them? Like, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say any child needs it the most. And I really appreciate all you people coming here and talking about, but I think we are getting some redundancy of questions here. And again, we have a lot of children's needs and a lot of educational items that I would love to encourage other people to come up and ask some questions. But I appreciate you coming and I think it's a great way for students' voices to be heard. I think I'd just start repeating myself.
I come back to one of my fundamental issues. If every child learns to read, learns to read well, then their challenges academically, their challenges behaviorally are going to be very different as they move through our schools. 25% of Wake County's children do not read well at the end of third grade. That's a crime. 15% of the kids who go to school in District Nine do not read well at the end of Grade Three. 15%! And they're not all special programs kids and they're not all Latinos. All right? And if they were, it wouldn't make any difference. We should still learn to read. That's what we need to be about. When we deal with those fundamentals, some of the things that happen six, eight years down the road will happen less frequently.
Okay, I think you'll be the last question? Or did you, is your question also on suspensions? Okay.
It's different from everything else.
Okay.
Why did she get scared?
What? Yeah, I think there was an arrangement they made.
Hello, my name is Terry Ellerby. Bill, I'm so excited that your last statement mentioned the third-grade deficiency in reading again. My question is in line with that. I'm not sure if it's a suburban or urban myth, but I've heard that the data collected on the deficiency of third-grade graders at the end of the school year determine the projection of prisons built. I want to ask you both, what preparatory structure would you design to be built for those kids based on the deficiency that they show at the end of third grade? And so that we can demolition the idea that we need more prisons?
Well, I have tried to research that myth on the internet. I've not been able to find anything to substantiate that that is valid, although I have to confess I've said that before myself. Okay? What we need to do is to recognize that some children come into our schools and enter as five-year-olds already reading at a second-grade level. We shouldn't stop helping them improve on that. We shouldn't just let them coast. But we have other kids who come in who don't know their alphabet, don't know their colors, and some of them aren't even potty-trained. Those children need more time. And right now, we don't have the flexibility to give more time to the children who need it while still stretching the children who've come to us better-prepared. It's going to take a rethinking of what we do in our schools so that children reach third grade and they make the switch from learning to read to reading to learn, which they have to do by the end of third grade to be successful students.
I would also hope that is a myth. I believe that there's a state law that says children need to read at the end of third grade. It's going to be also a challenge in the year-round schools as to when do you actually fix that, before they get to go to fourth grade without holding them back and then causing more consequent problems? I think that's something we need to address. I also think, again, starting early. Can we get some pre-K programs back in there? Can we get the community back in there where we're teaching the children early? Again, my Girl Scout, getting books in children's hands at a young age, teaching mothers and fathers or guardians that reading to the children, having that quality time is very important from the very beginning and letting them learn the joy of reading. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Arkiana Padgett. I'm a sophomore at Broughton High School. I'm with NCHEAT too. too. My question is, given the information you just heard, would you support a moratorium on out-of-school suspension and the implementation of restorative justice?
Would I support the moratorium on out-of-school suspensions?
A moratorium on out-of-school suspension, yes.
No, I think we need to balance the safety of the children in the school and out-of-school suspensions, and look at the reasons why. Am I missing, understanding your question? I think we can't just stop something. So I think I'm misunderstanding. I'm sorry.
No, I would not support a moratorium. We can make changes to the system, but I would not support a moratorium.
Okay, just one more question then, sir?
Eric Daly, I'm a Cary resident. I think there was a little misunderstanding, the moderator's question about the new firearms law. I just wanted to try to clear up...
No, if you have a question, you can ask a question, but we really don't need... If you want to talk to them afterwards...
You misstated the fact about concealed carry permit holders. They're not allowed to carry on campus, only have it in the parking. And you misstated that.
And in a locked compartment.
In the vehicle.
And have their ID and their permit with them.
Right, only on the parking lot, not on the campus.
Okay, thank you.
And my question for Bill was, when she asked one of the earlier questions, I didn't hear what you said you would do if the bond referendum fails.
I'm not going down that path tonight. If we have that as an eventuality, I will deal with that and try to help structure whatever moves forward. Tonight, I'm committed to helping this bond referendum pass, as is the other eight members of my school board and all seven members of the county commission. We've got unified, two elected bodies responsible for county-wide schools that have said this is the right way to go. We need to support that decision and pass the bond.
Nancy, did you have a comment that you wanted to make on that? Did you want to add anything on that? Okay, all right. I guess this almost concludes it. We still have our closing statements. And so you guys can finish, and then just give me one second afterwards, before you all start applauding and leave, to say a couple things. Okay, Nancy, I think you went second for opening, so you go first for closing. Again, I appreciate all you coming out, and... Thank you. As you can tell, I'm not a politician. This is my first debate, so I really thank all of you for coming out. I appreciate your patience and your listening to and all of your concerns for education for our children. I have been in the room for 14 years. I've got a very vast expertise in sitting there, listening, and I would like to be at the table to help lead our school system to future improvement in academic growth for all kids, and I thank you for your time.
And I thank you for being here. Again, thank you all of you for coming out tonight and sharing of your time and intellect and questions. Quality public education is a cornerstone of the American way of life. It enables our children to reach for the stars, to participate fully in our representative form of government, and our free enterprise system. You and I value public education. We need to improve it, not abandon it. Because of my prior experience on the Board of Education, my record as a listener, a consensus builder, and a builder of community, in March, I was appointed by the Board to fill an unexpired term of our District Nine representative. Since then, we've hired a great superintendent, formulated a new capital plan, and are increasing academic rigor in our schools. Help me to continue to serve on the Wake Board of Education so that every child in our schools is challenged to reach his or her potential, that every school in Wake provides a high-quality education, and that schools operate efficiently and with transparency. Please go to my website, billfletcherforschoolboard.com. You'll learn more about me and my family. My wife and daughter are back there. Thank you for being here. And I urge you to go vote for the bonds on October 8, and ideally for Bill Fletcher to represent District Nine. Thank you very much for being here.
Just before you start, just let me just say two things. One, or three things. One, thank you very much to the candidates, very much, not only for being here, but for putting yourself out there to serve the people of Wake County. It's a tremendously difficult job to run for political office, and it's an even more difficult job to actually serve on the school board. So thank you very much for your willingness to do this. Secondly, I would very much like to thank Covenant Christian Church for giving us, or providing this facility for us to have this forum. We really appreciate it. It's very important that community places are available for things like this. Thank you very much, Covenant Christian Church. Thank you. And then, thirdly, since we're all interested in education here, there will be an opportunity on May 27, I mean, on September 27, to meet Jim Merrill, the new superintendent. The Wake County League of Women Voters is hosting a luncheon where he will be in attendance. Please go to our website to sign up for that, and I'll turn you over to Karen.
Marian, thank you so much for moderating tonight. I also wanted to thank WREL for video streaming the forum tonight. We really appreciate that support from WREL. And we also want to thank the North Carolina Center for Voter Education, that is also taping the forum, and you'll be able to see it on their website. And finally, thank you to our volunteers from the league, our interns from Wake Up Wake County. We couldn't do it without the support of so many wonderful people. And also, I want to thank, again, Delta Sigma Theta and Tayon Dancy as well. So thanks for coming. And our candidates, much obliged. Thank you.
This has been the 2013 Wake County School Board District Nine Candidates Forum, presented by Wake Up Wake County and the Wake County League of Women Voters. To learn more about Wake Up Wake County, visit wakeupwak county.org. To learn more about the Wake County League of Women Voters, visit lvwake.org.